Well, good afternoon or good evening. Today is September 20th, 2021. This is the six o'clock PM Rowan County Commissioner meeting. We are very glad that you're here with us tonight, or if you're watching us by Zoom, welcome. We hope that today's meeting is a profitable one for you, and we appreciate your attendance tonight. It's been the tradition of this board and boards all across the country. We do something in the beginning of our meetings. We do what's called a solemnizing prayer. Now, for our visitors, solemnizing prayer, that's a term that infers that this prayer is for the commissioners, it's not for you. As commissioners, we acknowledge that sometimes we're not that bright. And so we look for wisdom, right, Judy? We look for wisdom wherever we can, and we know the source of great wisdom. And so we'll ask our chaplain to come up and do our prayer for us. And then after that, I'll have an announcement about the pledge. So commissioners, if you'd join me, we'll get started.
Good thanks for staying and thanks for privilege to be here tonight. We do thank for county commissioners, dear Lord. We do thank you for the time that they put in for these meetings, dear Lord. And thank for the dedication they have for Rowan County, dear Lord. I pray especially tonight, you're giving the wisdom they need tonight as this meeting's conducted, dear Lord. We pray, Lord, and thank for your blessings upon us, Lord, and thank for having us good county commissioners we have, that have a love and desire to do what's right. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, chaplain. Now, we're going to be led, and if you guys have come up here around the seat, okay? Tonight, we're going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by St. Matthew Lutheran Church Boy Scout Troop 333 with Scout Master Kyle Holshauser. And it's an honor to have them here. I've had them before the meeting, and these are some great guys. So appreciate you being here, and you guys, go ahead.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which things, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice, law,
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, commissioners, we've got three additions to the agenda from the county manager that will be added if approved as items N is Nancy, O is an Oscar, and P is a Paul to the consent agenda. Their procurement policies came from finance.
Mr. Chairman, two are for consent, and then one, the McGill presentation, would be a board action. The purchasing agent submitted the revised purchasing procurement policy would be, that could be N, and then the transit item could be next on consent. But the presentation from McGill is just a short presentation on the road bids that came in.
All right, so we make the procurement policy item N, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And then the transit, we'll make that item O, and then we would make the McGill presentation, we would make that item. Is there someone here to make that presentation?
They're going to be available by Zoom.
Well, let's put them at 6A. That's okay.
Thank you, very much.
Any other additions or deletions? All right, if not, we have a motion to approve the agenda's amended.
Don't move.
What?
We're ready.
You're ready?
Yep.
All right, Greg and Judy, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then, let's see, we've got the minutes of September 7th have been provided. Motion in a second to approve those.
Come on.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then the consent agenda that was amended, motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, do we have anyone for public comment, Carolyn? Nope, no one, all right. All right, so we'll move on then to item number three of our agenda. Scott Shelton, Scott is the Vice President of the Rowan County Economic Development Commission. Guys, we were talking about, one of the functions of the county is to try to attract jobs here. And so Scott is one of our executives for the Rowan County group that attracts companies here to Rowan County, and he's going to talk to us about a new project that is considering Rowan County for building. Scott, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members, for agreeing to hear this request today on behalf of North Point Development. I'm sure that the board is aware that North Point recently acquired 41 acres off of Webb Road. I think the address is 410 Webb Road. The company plans to build, well, what I thought at the time was a 630,000 square foot building, but it's my understanding now it's going to be more like 675,000 square feet at the property. And the building's now being referred to as the ID5 Commerce Center. But anyway, North Point is out there, you know, competing for tenants for the building, and they did come to the EDC asking if we could approach the board about ways to help them market the building and be more competitive in, again, competing with these other developers in the Charlotte region for tenants for the building. So really, what North Point has asked is, I guess, an incentive agreement just for this particular property. And the idea is to, I guess, incorporate county incentives to make the lease rate more attractive to prospective tenants. And of course, the board is aware, the way the county incentives work is that the property owner, tenant, whoever pays the taxes, county incentives typically pay back a portion of that as a form, in the form of a grant. So what North Point's proposing would work in the same way as the traditional county incentive, but there would be some differences, such as that the grant terms would run for a longer period of time than what the county traditionally does offer, and also the percentages would differ a little bit as well. But another one, one more important change is that North Point has offered to have minimum job creation requirements as part of this arrangement with the county. So right here in front of you, I've got the current county policy, and as you can see, there's three different grant levels, each requiring a different level of investment to qualify. All the county grant terms are for five years, and then typically, the county will consider job creation requirements on a case-by-case basis. I mean, none of the company or the project will come to us with a certain number of jobs. We'll factor those into the agreement, and then we kind of go from there. And also, there's no average wage requirement typically in our county incentive agreements. So what North Point is proposing, again, is slightly different. You see the column second to your left, the minimum investment required. There's the three thresholds that they're proposing. You see level one is 20 million, level two is 40, level three is 60. Of course, as I said on the previous slide, level one normally is 5 million for the county, level two is 50, and then level three is actually 100 million. So that's one difference there. Also, as I mentioned, grant term lengths would be extended for level two. It would go up from five years to seven years. Level three would go up from five years to nine years. Also, the first five years of level three would drop from an 85% grant, which is the current county policy, down to an 80% grant. As you can see, for level two, years six through seven would be 50%. For level three, year six through seven would be 40, and then there would be two more years there, years eight and nine would be 25%. And I mentioned earlier, there'd be minimum job requirements, creation requirements for these grants, and there's the numbers there. For level one, they're proposing 250 new full-time jobs, 500 new jobs for level two, and 1,000 for level three. North Point's proposing all these job creation goals be met within two years of the agreement's execution, and then also, average wage would be factored into it. The average wage of the jobs had to be at least $16 an hour, and that's exclusive of bonuses or benefits, it's strictly hourly pay. And of course, we would specify that the board could reduce the incentive or terminate the agreement if these requirements were not met. And here you see, for level two in blue, side-by-side comparison between the county's current policy and what North Point's proposing, there you see the percentage differences and the minimum job requirement. Same for level three. Didn't put level one up there just because the percentages are the same for the county policy and also what North Point's proposing. And then also, we tried to run some hypotheticals for the board. Here you see a hypothetical investment of $55 million, which would qualify for a level two grant. That second column from your left is the total incentive value for five years. You see it's equal because the percentage is equal for both proposed policies. But then in level, the levels for, I'm sorry, the years six and seven, you see a difference there, and that's that additional 50% grant percentage that North Point was talking about. It's about $361,000 on top of the 1.4 million that the normal policy calls for, and also for North Point's first five years. So the end result is a 25% difference in what they would receive through the current policy and what North Point's proposing. There'd be a similar percentage for a level three grant. There you see a hypothetical of $110 million. Of course, that stretches out for four additional years, but again, the end result is about the same, it's 24.7%, but again, around 25% difference between the current policy and North Point's proposal. Also, there's some additional notes I wanted to bring up about what we're talking about with North Point. Of course, North Point would be leasing this building. They would not be, you know, the job creator, it'd be their tenant. So the tenant would have to certify that the job creation goals are being met, that's stated in the agreement. Also, we'd have to come back to the board and amend the agreement to add this company, this job creator when the time comes. Again, that would come before the board. I would assume there'd be another public hearing for that, but it would be an amendment to the agreement. And there's language in the proposal agreement in front of you today that states that is the intent of the agreement to come back and be amended to add that third-party job creator. And then also, another important provision is that the agreement cannot be triggered until there's actually some jobs created on the property itself. So there's no incentive until the company comes. So that's the basics of what we're proposing, what North Point would like to see. And again, we respectfully ask that the board consider adopting this agreement for this property, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Scott, could you just remind us, we've done business with the North Point before, right?
Correct. They are the owners of the building Chewie is in right now.
And how are they to work with?
Well, they're great to work with. They, you know, were very bullish on Rowan County, and have been very proactive in seeking us out, and not just for things like this, but you know, as far as, you know, engaging with, you know, county staff, building department, things like that. I know that when they first built the Chewie building, there were some weather delays and things like that, and I think they were, you know, very accommodating in their interactions with us and with the county, and I think overall, very good, you know, corporate citizen. And they've also agreed to participate or are participating in our for Rowan campaign, where we seek to raise private sector dollars to offset some of the tax implications for the county for supporting economic development. So again, overall, very good corporate citizen.
You know, the initial contact we had with Chewie, or with North Point, has moved on. And the folks that were part of his team remain extremely interested in Rowan County. And I remember saying to Rod and Scott that if North Point had come to us a couple years ago and said, here's the deal, we're going to build two 700,000 square foot buildings and potentially bring 3,000 jobs, we would have said, you know, where do we sign? So the fact that they are back for another huge project is a real testimony to the EDC, to our permitting and inspections folks, Thomas O'Kelly and his leadership, to Ed and Muren Shane and that team over there, but Duke Energy, Piedmont Natural Gas, just every, yeah, environmental health people, everybody really made an impression on these folks. It's, you know, all of us that are married had a first date, and you're always, always wonder if you'll get that second date. And in this case, the first date went really, really well, and they came back to us. And so, and they, so we just wanted to be said how much we appreciate North Point. They are a real joy to work with.
Yeah, they've been very complimentary of everybody they've engaged with, with the county. And one thing I wanted to note too, just to, so everybody that's listening understands, we're not asking the board to incentivize a spec building. This is something that actually would be, you know, job creation. And again, there's been so much interest in Rowan County with the past few months from developers. We've had several reach out to us asking if the county would incentivize a spec building, and we've, you know, said that's something we're wanting to pursue, that you have to bring us a project with jobs, with good wages before we'll consider it. So again, I just want to know, we're not trying to incentivize a spec building, this is for a job-creating project.
One of the things that I think we always got, just glossed over, that's really important for people that, whether they have their first-time job, or whether they're older and are looking to move up, there's a requirement in here of $16 an hour. And that is, that is above and beyond health insurance, retirement program, any matching funds, any disability that the company might have, and the list goes on and on. And so there's probably, I don't know, conservatively, what, $10 to $15 an hour that goes into these other benefits that aren't even being accounted for here. So if this, if this company comes in, and there is a requirement that all of these goals will be met before these incentives are applied, we really have a commitment to our community that folks are going to have good jobs, good health insurance, so that we're not, you know, some people might be on Medicaid at this point in time and doing the best that they can, but these are going to really be 21st century jobs as far as the pay is concerned. We're, you know, minimum wage is what, between seven and eight dollars? And we're not talking about that anymore. We're talking about over double that for these folks. So my hat's off to this company that's coming in and building and has enough respect for Rowan County to think that they can fill these needs that you have brought in front of us. So thank you to everybody involved. This should be a real boon to Rowan County.
Yeah, Mr. Green brought up another point that reminded me of something else. There is language in the agreement that just says that all parties understand that this agreement may need to be amended from time to time to better represent the living wage at that time, with the idea of, you know, five years in, that number may need to be changed. So again, it just says that that's upfront, that's something we may want to consider.
Well, never before in any of our incentive agreements have we been able to secure a number of jobs. Our incentive agreement has always been based on the dollar amount of the investment, right?
That's correct. Now, we do typically have callbacks in there. If the company announces they're going to create X number of jobs, and then they fail to live up to it, the language is that normally it's produced on like a prorata basis or something along those lines to get compliance, but we never had a standard policy where we said, you have to create this number of jobs to get this incentive.
You've never had a wage requirement?
No, the state of North Carolina normally requires wage goals to qualify for their incentives, but we've never had one that I'm aware of.
And the only other thing I'd point out is our, what is it, level three that's 85%? One of the good things here is we're going from 85 to 80, but when you're considering depreciation, that's a better deal for us. We're dropping the first five years, 5%.
Right.
And that's when there's the most value in that property.
Correct, yeah.
So that's a benefit. And I think, I think the five of us would say, the numbers that you gave, that's fine, but the real value in these is the jobs and the opportunity, the health insurance, the retirement, the wages, that's where the real value is.
Right.
Appreciate it. All right, well, anything else for Scott? All right, then we'll, Scott, don't go anywhere in case there's some questions. We'll open the floor. We're going to have a public hearing, and so if there's anyone that wants to come forward and speak on this incentive agreement, then come forward and state your name and say what you like. All right, seeing none, we'll close the Florida public hearing, and do we have a, let's see, do we have a motion to approve the North Point incentive agreement as presented?
Don't move.
Okay. Greg and Judy, motion in a second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Scott. And thank your team for us, okay?
Thank you.
All right, the next item is a quasi-judicial hearing for SUP 03-21. Shane Stewart will be presenting. The hearing for consideration of SUP 03-21 is now in session and will focus on an application submitted by Kevin Settenary for an expansion of an existing dog boarding kennel operation located at 2230 Old Union Church Road. If you feel that any member of the board may have a conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. The board will render one of the following three decisions. Will approve the permit as requested or with additional conditions, or continue the request or deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case may come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. This board can only accept sworn testimony. No hearsay evidence is admissible. Shane, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Shane Stewart, Rowan County Planning Office, 402 North Main Street, Salisbury. So as the chairman read, this request is for a small expansion of an existing dog boarding operation, a kennel, at 2230 Old Union Church Road. And the picture you see before you is back in 2007, staff did approve a, on the bottom level, it's a 3,000 square foot dog breeding facility. On the upper level, it's 1,500 square feet for residents. So Mr. Settenary pulled those permits there and lives at the structure and had a dog breeding operation. At some point, it evolved a little bit into the use of kennels, we'll talk about here shortly, but for orientation purposes, you look at the map on the left, this is the subject parcel. It's a 31 and a half acre tract outlined in blue. This is Old Union Church Road, Wildwood Road. Here's the Aldi distribution facility, 85 just off the map here. But a few other things I should point out as well, Mr. Settenary owns an 11-acre tract here bordering the site for a total of 42 acres. On the right, this is from March, February, March of this year, this is the kennel with the residents on top. You see a structure here. This is a canopy for the residents, parked the cars under. Two buildings that are personal storage, not related to the kennel, this one as well. And in the back, there's three dog enclosures of brick structures, and then these are brick walls about six foot for the personal, according to applicant, the personal animals not related to the venue. But although staff don't go looking for problems, we noticed in the aerial imagery on a nearby site when we're working with the property owner there, we noticed this structure here under construction did not have zoning or building permits, and then there's a slab out back, it's about 2,400 square feet. I will say, the applicant has been extremely cooperative, answered every question, every piece of information we asked for has been delivered. He has contacted building inspections to work with them on what's needed. It was stated, this process needs to be completed first, then they'll work with Mr. Settenary at that point. This structure, again, in the, or the slab, I should say, again, is personal use, not related to the kennel. And then this structure here, maybe better in the next few slides, is the overall site plan, but in the detail, this structure is termed a puppy playground. So it'd be an indoor area where the dogs can play when it's cold or nasty outside, and this is the slab I mentioned earlier. Be somewhat similar, these two buildings, he's got various equipments going to be used, but again, not part of this request, nor would the future residents be part of the request. That's allowed by right. Any of these personal use storage buildings or the house are by right. In addition to this structure, they would also like to entertain the idea of an expansion of the office and more boarding in this location here. This is 2021 of the same year on the area, but it's a Blake View. You can see those structures that I mentioned here in the enclosure, two buildings, all personal use, as well as the upper part of this building, the canopy. And at that time, it didn't have a roof on it, it does now, but it's still not complete. The other future building-
Where's this lab at, Shane?
It's right here. I have a side view of part of that, I'll show you in a minute. The other future structure would be right here against the retaining wall. Going back to this image here, a few things I think probably worth noting, in this total 42 acres, you see a lot of woods in the area, the subject tract, all this surrounding, and within a quarter mile, there's three residences, including the applicants. And just for point of reference and scale, the structure, the main kennel, 700 feet off the road. It is 790 feet from the Williams residence off Wildwood, 6020. The next nearest residence on Old Union Church, 2285, the Lackey residence here, and then there's another residence, 1,180 feet on by the Parkers. And the kennel currently is 300 feet from the nearest property line. Few pictures of the area, this is from the driveway looking back towards Aldi, and here is Wildwood directly across the road. I believe this is probably their alternate driveway. The Lackeys have another drive that looks like their primary up the road, but it loops back around. And looking back east on Old Union Church, you do see a curve here and some limited site distance. I talked with Eric Golson at DOT, no driveway permits required. There's a posted yellow sign, not a white mile-per-hour sign for speed limit, of 30 for that curve. As best I can tell, that's probably about 300 feet, which would get you your one mile per 10-foot in the math when they do the site distance check. So he didn't have any issues with the location, but just wanted to point that out. Looking back, this is the drive leading into the site. Let's see, again, it's heavily wooded. I think currently, I'm not sure what percentage, but it is in the forestry program with the Tax Assessor's Office. Leading the main drive to this canopy structure here for the residents, you see the building just behind it, the puppy playground. It's here in the top right. This is that same image here, off the back, that red color he will pick up, that's the enclosure. So along this area, the three enclosures for personal use. And Commissioner Green, this is the corner, that slab just off the side here, and it goes back over in the property line, well over here, picking up that adjoining tract Mr. Settenary owns. From the land use plan, it's in Area 2, also in the quarter overlay for 85. And I think the board's seen this plenty of times when you have an existing business, anything that's considered expansion, if it minimizes the- And I think the board's seen this plenty of times when you have an existing business, anything that's considered expansion, if it minimizes the impacts, then it's generally encouraged. And with that, I should segue into pointing out a few things from the staff report. On page two, there's three standards for kennels. The operation meets all three from staff's perspective. And talking with animal services in the county, there's no outstanding violations locally. They do have, you have in the, the packet, the NC Department of Ag, most recent inspection and the license. So they're licensed through twenty-two. There was a few minor things they had before, but they've been addressed and currently in compliance. Staff received one call about the request when we sent out letters, and the individual was not opposed to the request. Just kind of curious what was, um, what it pertained to. So our typical process for special use is the, the criteria for the findings of fact. There are some examples, uh, findings there for your consideration. And a motion for each one of those, and then a motion for the decision. Mr. Settenary is here for any questions.
Questions for Shane? Thank you, Shane. Stanka Shane.
You start singing, I'm leaving.
I'm not gonna start singing. Kids are like, what does that mean? It's an old song. Ask your parents. All right, um, with the applicant, did you have anything to add? Okay, all right. All right, is there anyone else that was sworn in that would like to, uh, come up and, and speak on this item? Anything? Anyone? April, anyone online?
If there's anyone joining us remotely, if you'd like to use the raise your hand feature within the Zoom application, or star nine if joining by phone. Mr. Chairman, I don't see anyone indicating they'd like to speak.
All right, then we'll close the public hearing portion, and, uh, we have findings of fact that, um, are available to us. So Commissioner Green, would you offer our brief
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the development of the property in accordance with the proposed conditions will not materially uh, endanger the public health or safety. Fact, the project approved this condition upon adherence to applicable building code compliance as determined by the Rowan County Building Inspection's Office. In fact, that after passing a facility compliance inspection on December the second, two thousand and twenty, the North Carolina Department of Agriculture renewed the boarding kennel license for the Loving Puppy Resort through June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, the second fact is that the development of the property in accordance with the proposed conditions will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property or the development, or that the development is a public necessity. Fact, no material evidence was presented suggesting this request would injure property values.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And third, that the location of the, uh, that the location and the character of the development in accordance with the proposed conditions will be in general harmony with the area in which it is located and in general conformity with any adopted county plans. Fact, that the proposed plans comply with the three special use requirements for boarding kennel operations. Fact, according to the staff report, existing and proposed kennel operations are centrally located on forty-two acres of wooded property, approximately three hundred feet from the nearest adjoining property owner. In fact, that according to the staff report, there are three dwellings within a quarter mile of the existing and proposed kennel. Another fact is according to the applicant, the kennel operation is completely indoor with the exception of the daily walks on leash.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a, uh, motion to approve SUP O three dash two one.
Don't move. Second.
All right, Judy motion, uh, Craig second. Uh, any further discussion? Then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, and, uh, thank you for your investment. We appreciate you investing in our county very much.
Beautiful facility.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, thank you. All right, uh, we'll move on. Uh, Shane is up again for a public hearing for Z O six dash two one uh, for Ruth Fisher.
All right, uh, Mr. Jack Fisher's here representing the family. So the Mary Hedrick Lamb heirs and the request comes from Ruth Fisher. It pertains to their, uh, portion of their property, sixty-two acres off of Jacob Lamb Lane. If you look at the tract, they own quite a bit of property here. It's a total of three hundred, two hundred and thirty-three acres encompasses all this, but the left side of eighty-five is in Spencer's zoning jurisdiction. So here's eighty-five, and then Willow Creek Drive extends off of Long Ferry Road, which just when we're talking about Chewy, so that road links up with the access road across from Chewy, comes down and ends up into this small, um, I think it's a motorcycle track. But before you get to the railroad, this area here, the, the, uh, Fishers have had sort of earmarked for family development. It's been in their family for a number of years. And although both sides of the railroad are zone ED two, they really would like this section zone RA for the purposes of putting some, um, family members out there that are interested in um, joining the others on Jacob Lamb Lane. And you see, there's already some here in the interior. So again, we're focusing only on this sixty-two acre portion. The rest would remain ED two. You look a little closer, there's five residences here, a total of six lots. And railroad line for Duke provides a pretty good barrier. And then over here, I think this portion's on ED two and this as well, but this is a, uh, drainage area that really provides another natural border. So be kind of difficult to develop this as such unless these, all these folks wanted to, to sell. So nonetheless, with that in mind, that's what the Fishers, um, would like to do. There is a property owner right now that's interested in having their, their lot surveyed so they can build a home, uh, pretty soon out there. So this is needed first. With, uh, Willow Creek at your back, looking in Jacob Lamb on the top left. And then you look back to eighty-five, you can see the trucks here, and then back towards, uh, Long Ferry. And here's the railroad crossing here. So this is a state maintained road. This is a private road, but of course, in family divisions, you can divide on a private road. As far as the plan, we're in area two. More importantly, the highway corridor overlay. Think we probably would agree if the houses weren't there, it might be a different question, but it, the family's intentions, the fact that there's folks out there, it just kind of makes sense. Um, so nobody responded to the letters. I think everybody kind of knows what's going on, but be glad to answer any questions. And here's the typical process, unanimous approval from the planning board. We have a consolidated statement now, so that's one motion unless you have to contend with, but a motion to consider the statement here combined from the planning board, and then motion to, for the request. Any questions?
Now, I thought I circled the, uh,
It's on the screen here.
I need this one motion.
Okay, all right. All right, any, any questions? Jack, uh, anything from you?
Yeah.
What we all want to know is can we all move out there?
Now, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this land has been in the Lamb family for about approximately a hundred years almost. We do have ninety, over ninety-eight acres listed on Hackett Street, which is across the road from there as industrial. And that's been under, several times looked at, and they already have been, land has been certified by Duke Power and everything on that part. What we're talking about here is sixty-two acres of family that's in there. There's approximately five families in there right now. And to be quite frank with you, if they want to, if somebody wanted to buy that property, it would take about a million dollars per house, plus they'll give them the same acreage where they, somewhere else on a dead end road where they're by themselves and build the house to, for them. So there's where you're, that's where that situation is. But it's, it's, my mother-in-law set this up for them many years ago, and some of them have been up there for over twenty years. And so now the great grandchildren are coming into effect. And so my wife decided that she wanted to go ahead and put all of this up there for them. Plus, we farm approximately, I think, twenty some acres or thirty some acres in front of there. And, uh, that's gonna stay that way. After she dies, and she said they can do what they want as far as that goes, but as long as she's living, that's what you want. So I think I appreciate you would vote for it. There's no two ways about it because it just, it's not gonna be sold for anything like that. There is seventy acres aside of it that is for sale. And so, and then there's ninety-eight across the other side of eighty-five. Thank you.
All right, Jack, thank you. All right, um, we'll open it up for a public hearing. If there's anyone else that would like to speak about this, uh, D dash zero six, uh, Z zero six dash two one. Anyone else? April, anyone?
And we'd like to invite our online guests. If you want to use raise your hand, star nine will get you recognized. Give you just a moment. I don't see anyone indicating this, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll close the hearing, and, um, in front of us, we have, uh, the motion to adopt. Ms. Glusman, will you offer that up for us?
Sure. Move to adopt the statement of consistency and reasonableness. PG four staff report. April, can you bring that last screen back?
Yep.
There you go. Thank you. Z O six dash two one is consistent with the land use plan and reasonable based on the existing six RA zone lots within this parcel.
We have a second.
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then do we have a motion to approve Z zero six dash two one?
Don't move. Second.
Motion Judy, Craig second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you, Jack. Thank you. Uh huh. All right, Shane, uh, we have another public hearing for Z O seven dash two one for Carolyn Withers.
Guys having fun yet?
This shouldn't be pretty straightforward as well. So Ms. Withers has, uh, quite a bit of property out there off Goodson Road, twenty-three acres exact. And she has a portion of the property that's sort of a holdover MHP zone from a, um, a decision her dad made back in the eighties, had a small mobile home park. And currently, if you look at the site, you see a lot of red. This represents the CBI zoning district. And, um, the blue area we're talking about is the portion of Ms. Withers' property that would be rezoned. So she owns all this, is currently CBI, and that's one tract. This is part of the tract. And in total, this area is three and a half acres. So the green part, MHP, would be removed in the request, go to CBI. As the board knows, we've got certain areas of the county that's, um, CBI sort of an open district. There might be businesses there, houses, and everything in between. A lot of this is influenced from seventy, a good sized swath through there is on CBI. So it's open district allows lots of things. And just to focus, we do have a couple abandoned mobile homes that Ms. Withers is working with code enforcement to have those, uh, removed. And this mobile home here would be upfit, and this is her residence at ten fifty-five. So we'd remove all that from designation with the assessor's office, with us, the designation, the whole nine yards. The MHP district is a little bit deceptive when it, when you look and see that residential is permitted because it has a lot of baggage with it too, in that it's really an exclusive district primarily designed to address a large tract of land with multiple mobile homes on it. So in that being exclusive, while they could have a residence on an MHP zone tract, it has greater setbacks and some other things that aren't as flexible. Ms. Withers would like to divide the tract and put another home out there, so this provides that flexibility to her as well. If you look at the upper left, this is Withers' drive leading back to her residence, and then the homes we were talking about to the left. You look down north on Goodson Road, those same structures, and then back towards seventy. This is her neighbor there, Gamble Residence, and another neighbor, McFadden on Goodson Road. As far as the land use plan, it is in that highway corridor overlay, so it definitely complies with that with the CBI designation. Uh, staff received one call about the request, only curious about it, not opposed. And here's the combined statement. Ms. Withers is present if you have any questions for her.
All right, uh, would the applicant like to, to come forward at all? Don't have to, but certainly welcome you, okay? All right, well, welcome. We're glad you're here. All right, uh, we'll open the floor for a public hearing for this. If anyone, uh, has anything to add uh, to this zoning request, then now would be a good time. And April, let us know if there's anyone online.
Yes, again, we'd like to invite our online guests. Use the raise your hand feature to participate in public comment. And I am not seeing any indication at this time, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, Mike, uh, do you have the statement of consistency?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, uh, Z O seven two one is consistent with the highway corridor overlay for State's Boulevard and reasonably, reasonably based on the fact that the property is no longer used as a mobile home or MHP, and majority of the surrounding property is on CBI.
So second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, do we have a motion to approve Z O seven dash two one?
Some move. Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Withers. Yep, thanks for coming tonight. Uh, let's see, I think I added in here six A. So Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Oh, six, six A is for, for McGill, right? Okay, yeah. Sorry, I was, uh, on the Autumn Jubilee. Hey, Doug.
Hello.
So, so Doug is able to, uh, join us tonight. We have, uh, the bids have came in for the road on the property, uh, where the current animal shelter is, and I'm gonna turn it over to Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members, Aaron. Um, on, uh, August twenty-fourth, uh, we had a bid opening for the project. We presented this to the board back in July, I believe, at your, uh, second meeting in July, uh, where the board authorized McGill Associates to get formal bids for the project. We advertised and had the first bid opening on August twenty-fourth and only received one bid. At that point, we re-advertised the project and took bids again on September ninth, uh, where we received two bids. The low bid was from, uh, go back. From Carolina Sightworks, and their total bid, including From Carolina Sightworks, and their total bid, including the base bid and the alternate, was eight hundred eighty thousand, five hundred twenty dollars.
Doug, can you go back to that page?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can just leave it there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So the base bid for the project was four hundred eighty-five, four hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. And that included building the roadway from Julian Road down to the entrance to the animal shelter. It included the water line to that point, and it included the sewer line from the existing sewer up to the dog adoption center. The alternate was to construct the road the rest of the way through to Corporate Center Drive and the water line through all the way. So that brings the total, for the total project, the roadway, all of the water and all of the sewer to eight hundred eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Beyond that, I'll, I'll answer any questions.
Doug, why, what do you think the price has doubled between the two bids?
I don't know. That does seem to be rather odd. The low bid was Carolina Sightworks. We have worked with them before in Rowan, excuse me, in Rowan County with some work in Spencer. Very successfully. So we feel confident that they are capable of doing the project. They're appropriately licensed. This is an odd project because it's, for a roadway project, it's pretty small. So there wasn't a lot, obviously, there wasn't a lot of interest in it. So I'm not sure how competitive that second bid was. But we do feel good about the low bid. We feel like that's, that, that in this market that we're in right now is a pretty good number.
Will they be required to have a bond to finish this project?
Yes, they'll have, they'll have to have full performance and payment bonds. And we will hold retainage as the project goes through.
Aaron, is this still going to qualify for the infrastructure money that came down on the COVID package?
The, the portion, as I understand, as I understand the, the most recent money we received related to water and sewer would, but the actual road would not.
Okay.
Separated out?
It, it is, it is not separated out, but I, I can, I can tell you the majority of it is not going to be the water line. I think there's about sixty thousand that, the, the company that sells John Deere tractors has agreed to pay. Jim and I were talking before the meeting. This, this particular project was not budgeted. Some of that has to do with the COVID, you know, whether or not we can use the COVID money or not. And is Anna, Anna, are you still here?
Yeah.
I, I don't mean to, this isn't a trick question. But was the bid put out that would be in compliance with the federal guidelines or?
I'm not sure. I have to go back and look it all up. The bid was put out before I think we were about to.
Okay. So yeah, that's a, that's another thing we need to, to make sure that the, when the bid was put out, it was put out within the guidelines that would, would.
Save a particular road?
No, we've, we've done that part. It's the guy, it's the federal guidelines for procurement. And some of the, the ARP money. For construction projects, you have to follow their procurement guidelines versus the ones we're accustomed to following, which is the state. So that's something we really need to, to double check on. You also run the risk, I mean, if we, if we didn't, i- if there was something that was in the bid package that doesn't follow all the, the federal guidelines, we might have to go back out to bid to make sure that the project could be paid for with that, with that money. Do you, do you know, Doug?
We haven't seen final guidelines for the ARPA monies yet. So it's still sort of a moving target. We did follow all the state statutory requirements for bidding the project, the times and, and the forms and documents that are used. I don't know if the federal has provided any guidelines with respect to if there are minimum wage requirements or minority outreach or any of those other things that we have seen on certain types of projects.
So the two questions I would have is what is, if this isn't on budget, then I think we want to know if we're voting on it. Part of it will be, let's assume that water sewers cover, but we really don't know that number yet. So I'd want to know that, and then we can have a discussion about the alternate bid. Is this something that we feel like we really want to do? What's, what's the value in that?
Well. My only concern is the additional four hundred is not in the budget. And that's something we could always come back and do. And in that period of time, once that water sewer gets down halfway down the track and that, and the roads there, it may draw us enough interest to, for people that want to build on that area down there to justify finishing the road. But, you know, we all talked about it when the inception of the water sewer line going in that it could be paid for by the ARP dollars. And I'd like to see how much that is with, also with what James River is going to pay their sixty thousand. Just really, how much are we out of pocket for this road? And, you know, if it's, and if it's reasonable, we can look at doing the alternative. But I'd like to have all the information before we made that decision.
Doug, not to put you on the spot, but could you give a rough estimate of what portion of that bid would be the water infrastructure?
It would be a, a rough estimate. I would say out of that total, it's probably somewhere between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
How the base bid?
That was about of the total. Probably of the base bid, somewhere in the hundred thousand dollar range would be my guess. There would be a sewer portion of it. Could be slightly higher.
Minus their sixty would leave us three twenty.
Yeah, approximately three twenty. If, if the board, and I apologize about the, the federal guidelines and the ARP, but if the board wanted to award the bid contingent upon the procedures following the federal guidelines, you could do that. And then if it's not, we could come back and go out to bid. It's just, we don't know. And honestly, when you look at the, the other bidder, and this is the second time we've went out to bid just to get bidders, the, the amount of federal dollars. If we, if we have to go out to bid again and add more regulations, the project may come up, you know, costing more than we would have saved. Now, that is if, if we didn't follow the, you know, the, the, the federal guidelines.
Are you saying regulations cost money?
Yes, I am. A lot. I mean, this road probably, I mean, the private sector could probably do it for half the price. So, you know, it's, and we don't, you know, I don't even, the, the federal guidelines are not even completely finalized and may change, so. You know, we've been, this, this road, the, the road, I'll say this, the road is in bad shape and something has, has to be done. Yeah, we, I mean, so. You know, the, the shelter's been out there for a long time, and the road is, is beyond repair.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, I, I, I am shocked at the price. I, I mean, I think it's a good price.
I do, too.
Does, so, my memory seems to be fading daily. Wasn't alternate one because we were looking at putting the recycle center out there? And we wanted to run the road all the way through. And I guess the thought about the recycle center, or the convenience centers changed a little bit since then. But if we're planning for future expansion of that, could we still pay for the alternate one out of those funds? Or do you actually have to have?
Yeah, now, if, if, if you were going to use the money on a, on a solid waste, if, if the purpose of, of the rest of the road was to, for solid waste, you, you could use the, the solid waste fund.
But what, I guess my question is, how much of, how much of it can we, you know, say that we're going to maybe do it and use it? Or does you have to actually go ahead and plan through?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to account, I mean, if we account for the money being spent out of that enterprise fund, it, it would need to be, you know, a well intentioned, the purpose of the road is for the, you know, a new recycling center, which we're.
But we had plans, preliminary plans drawn and shown, so how many decades would we have before we had to build it?
I, I would say at this time, we are not actively moving forward. You know, we, the staff hadn't been directed to go out to bid for, so it's. You.
Remember the cost of that?
It was six hundred thousand, I think. I remember.
For the center?
Yeah, well.
Doug, do you, do you remember the cost for the center?
Over a million, wasn't it?
I don't remember the cost that we had, but it was, it probably is more like a million than six hundred thousand.
Spend a million to get.
And Aaron, didn't it, didn't we come back with, when Caleb told us that, that they closed it, there really wasn't any pushback from the public about it?
Yeah, initially, there were, you know, some complaints, but we have, there, there hasn't. At, at this time, I don't believe, if my memory is correct, that Caleb would recommend going forward based on need, not based on, not based on convenience, but I don't think any of the sites are overflowing. So, you know, it may not have been as much of a need as we thought.
And, and we can always come back if we want to put that in and use the enterprise fund to pay for the road and the facility, can't we?
Yeah, I, I think you can. Yeah, I mean, because you can't build the facility without.
Without the road, yeah. Yeah.
Well, along those lines, if we were to rebuild it in the future, then we could reimburse the county for the addition. Well, if we did the whole road now, would that cost be able to be reimbursed from those funds in the future?
I don't, I don't know. I think you could in the same fiscal year. I don't know if you, I don't know if you could years down the road. Down the road.
Yeah, well, I got it.
Why, we hired your sense of humor.
Yeah.
But my concern here, Doug, can you tell me how long it's going to take to complete this project if we give it a green light?
The, I don't remember the contract time on this one, but it's probably, we're probably looking at about six months. Depending on if, if we can get everything set up and get it paved before winter. If it goes beyond, it may be the spring before it can be paved. Because you can't pave in the middle of the winter.
Yeah, you can't pave mud.
Yeah, I think they're ready to.
Well, I, I know that the shelter, as well as the new dog adoption center is coming on pretty strong. And I don't want this to be another holdup we've put in front of them again, so.
What, what was the motion that you recommended, Aaron?
Well, so if, if the board, if the board wanted to award it, whether or not, you know, because, because I, you know, with that, I, I strongly believe whether or not we follow the federal guidelines. And, and for anybody listening, that doesn't mean it was right or wrong. We, we, we follow the state line guidelines, but if it's a federal project, there's additional guidelines. And to get reimbursed with federal dollars, there might be something that the engineers or the county didn't look at because most of our projects aren't federal. So I, I really think it, because of the price, if we were, if we, if, for some reason we didn't meet it, I think we probably should still go ahead regardless, because I think the price may come back and negate potentially rebidding it.
Right.
So if the board wanted to move forward with the base bid, the motion would be to be awarded bid in the amount of four hundred eighty, five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, and authorize the manager to sign a contract with Carolina Sightworks not to exceed that. And then there would also need to be a budget amendment from the general fund in that same amount. Now, it, it wouldn't all be used because we, we intend to get money back from the company that sells John Deere tractors, but in order for Jim to pre-audit the contract, the money would have to be sitting there.
Mr. Manager, just a point of information. Did the TDA not just pay off their loan to the county for three hundred and fifty thousand that was not in the budget?
Is that budget, the revenue been approved? Okay, yeah, yes.
Okay, so we're, we're with sixty thousand that James River is going to give us with the three fifty. We're really only looking at seventy thousand dollars here, coming out of, coming out of the.
Did that budget go back to the general fund or into the?
And then we don't know what they're going to pay for the, that's what I'm saying, so we miss a wash. And I think the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost, so.
I bet you couldn't get the same bid yet.
No, that's why I wanted to know how quickly.
Times that we spent that money already, I think.
Yeah, so, so Commissioner Pierce is right, but the way the, the, as I understand it, the way the revenue budget amendment was, the money that was paid back from tourism went back into the general fund. And so this money would be coming out. Yes, it may be a wash, but it, it's, it's still two separate budget amendments. It's not, it's not an, an even.
And I get that, but I'm just saying that that's money that we didn't have in the budget that has come into the budget now. Okay?
Make a motion?
So moved. I make a motion that we direct the county manager to sign a contract with Carolina Sightworks for the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
And, and authorize a budget amendment from the general fund in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty.
And authorize a budget amendment back to the general fund for four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. I thought maybe I was going to stop this. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
All right, Randy, update item number eight.
No, we've got seven.
Up seven. The, please, back to you, Aaron.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kelly Natoli is, is going to help explain the policy or the recommendation you have before you, but I'll, I'll just give a brief summary. A, a, as of today, the county intends to move forward with the Autumn Jubilee. Staff in the manager's office specifically, Siobhan and IT, GIS, Don, Kelly, the Health Department have all worked together, including printing and creating a map that shows spaces for vendors, which is a, a new arrangement than previous years to where there is. spaces for vendors, which is a, a new arrangement than pre- previous years to where, uh, there is uh, more space between vendors that will provide, um, some social distancing. Uh, there's several other items they've done, but everybody has, has worked hard to truly, um, to make changes versus just saying, hey, you know, um, you know, we're gonna be safer. They have, uh, worked hard, uh, and the staffs at Parks and Rec, I mean, uh, it's been additional work for them because it's making changes in the, uh, uh, the last quarter. Um, so it, i- it, it is difficult, but based, um, solely, um, on the, the fact that COVID nineteen still remains. Um, and, you know, it, it is, um, I mean, we all know that, um, it is a serious disease, uh, people continue to get sick. Uh, people continue to die of COVID, and it's something we all take very seriously. Um, but on the same token, life goes on. Um, and the county, you know, continues to operate, businesses are open, theaters are open. Uh, football games happen on Friday night. Um, you know, things, things must go on, uh, they, they, they can't stop. Um, so it's, it's been very difficult, the staff, um, this is not a decision that's been made lightly because we understand we're still in the middle of a pandemic. On the same token, um, you know, Carolina Panther Stadium is full. So, um, this event is outside, um, you know, there's, there's no, as I understand it, there is no state regulations that require, uh, that events be canceled. The last time I checked, the State Fair in Raleigh is still moving forward. Um, uh, so, i- w- with that said, um, we take it seriously. Um, we, all the staff, and I know the commissioners were all aware that this terrible, um, pandemic, you know, continues, um, and, um, it's a hard time for everyone, but we must live our lives and we can't just stop doing everything. So wi- with that said, to be, um, we came up with a plan to, um, provide that no employee would be required to work at the event. Um, and Kelly has worked hard on that, and she can tell you how that works, and I can just tell you the general theory behind it. Uh, the theory is that we've received a lot of money from the federal government. And the employees at Parks and Rec work really hard, and those that volunteer this year to work um, at the Autumn Jubilee, um, will earn sixty dollars an hour, uh, if the board adopts this plan. Um, at the same time, in the past, as I understand it, the twenty-five thousand or so guests that come each day, um, will be able to continue to show up and, and live some type of, of uh, sense of normalcy, to continue to have outlets, um, to be around other people and to have social events and to celebrate the fall, um, as we have the last thirty or forty years in Rowan County. So it's, it's a balancing act, it's, it's something that's been hard, um, for staff and we, we've had conversations with elected officials and the county attorney, it's, it's been a hard decision, but I think in the end, um, based on the hard work that the staff have done in, um, spacing out the event, changing the event, not all things that happened in the past will happen in this event, but there will still be an Autumn Jubilee, a time for happiness and celebration uh, for the community and folks that wanna come to our community. Um, and I think you have a very good policy in, in front of you with the protocols that will take place. Um, and also it will provide, um, the, the employees that are not comfortable working at the event, they're, they're not required to. Um, and those that volunteer, um, will be paid sixty dollars a month. So with that said, Kelly, would you like to kind of highlight the, the basic, uh, anything I left out or said wrong?
I think you covered most of it, um, the, the attached safety protocols are in your documentation. Um, I know Don has worked really hard, um, and his staff to make sure that everybody is spaced out a minimum of ten feet each vendor that will be there. Uh, they are providing additional hand sanitizing stations, um, a lot of different, a lot of different, um, protocols that they're putting in place to make sure it's a safe event. My role was to try and look at, you know, how, how do we, uh, make sure the employees are comfortable who will be working there and make sure that no one is required to work if they don't want to work. Um, and we understand that, so, um, what we did is just put together a plan to where the employees who typically work the event, which are our parks and our staff, or our parks and our park staff, our animal, uh, services staff that typically work at the shelter, the, some of the deputies who work the event, um, that those individuals will be given first priority to sign up. And then for those who do not want to work the event, we could hopefully have a incentive to draw additional volunteers to help, you know, finish out what we need to run the event successfully. Uh, don't know at this time exactly how many of our existing staff who typically work the event want to continue to work the event. I have no feel for that just yet. Uh, wanted to, you know, work with you all first, and if you're in agreement, we'll put up a signup sheet and, and we'll get the process rolling. Any questions about that?
Questions for Kelly or Aaron?
So there'll be no, um, every county employee that's out there will get paid the, uh, sixty dollars an hour. There won't be anyone that's, was already had to be out there like a standby ambulance or anything, all that, every, everybody that, every county employee will get paid the same to be out there.
Yes. And, and employees who are already scheduled to work for that day in another capacity for the county will not be able to volunteer for the event. This, this is a true volunteer opportunity.
But they won't be assigned out there?
No.
It, and if I may add two things, one is this will be paid for with COVID money. Um, two, there, there is a real possibility, especially because we, we, uh, with Kelly's guidance, we follow the strict CDC guidelines with employees. There's a possibility half the employees won't be able to work that day. Uh, that doesn't mean half the employees will be sick. It doesn't mean two percent of the employees will be sick, but if there's exposures, uh, and depending on whether or not you've, you know, an employee's been vaccinated or not vaccinated, what the exposure, you know, is, they may be required to be quarantined, so. Wha- what this will do essentially is make sure, even if, if half or twenty-five percent of the employees that there's, you know, are exposed and can't work that day, that hopefully we'll have employees that will. Cause as reviewing other, uh, counties, what some of the concerns have been staffing. So hopefully this will provide an incentive in the event that if twenty-five percent of the employees are healthy, but they're quarantined for, you know, X, Y, Z, which can be based on, Kelly's done a great job and her staff have, that we follow the CDC guidelines. Um, you know, there's a possibility that there'll be employees that will not be allowed to work that day and will need other volunteers to make sure, um, it happens. So if two hundred sign up or three hundred sign up, there's a possibility that if you're number two hundred and fifty, you may be working that day. Um, if for whatever reason, um, you know, and throughout the whole pandemic, we've, you know, employees have been at home, working from home, quarantined at home, who aren't sick and never get sick. Um, it's just a part of, part of this terrible, uh, virus, uh, that we've had to deal with. But, uh, a- anyway, thank you, Kelly.
Yes. Any other questions?
Questions for Kelly?
Thank you.
Well, Kelly, we know that, uh, you get called on to do stuff you never imagined. Um, so thanks for being a strong part of the team. We appreciate you. Don, uh, is Don in here?
Yeah.
Okay, Don, thank you.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And we know you've been at the centerpiece of this, so thank you for your work on this and thank your staff, and, uh, we'll move forward. Okay? All right.
You have anything to say? Do I? You have anything you wanted to say?
Sure, you can go right ahead.
Thanks.
Well, number one, um, you know, as, as we announced back in May, we said it would be a modified, you know, uh, festival. And of course, we didn't know that in August, that, you know, this COVID would rear its head again like it did. And of course, with that, uh, we had staff that had concerns about working the festival. Uh, and I communicated those to our county manager. Uh, he listened to those concerns, and I think through those, through his listening and working with Kelly and doing some rearranging and agreeing to agree and agreeing to disagree, we were able to come up with a plan here. Uh, you know, just through some of our, you know, we, we've cut the hayrides out because of just close proximity. Uh, we've cut, we've cut the pumpkin painting out because of the fact of the children that participate are under the age twelve, those who can't be vaccinated. We've increased hand wash stations in areas. And, um, you know, our craft vendors, uh, we've had, we've lost some craft vendors, uh, because of this, the age of some of the vendors. We've gained some because of other festivals closing. But, uh, we've got about a hundred and thirty crafter vendors currently, and we've spaced them out ten feet apart, uh, rather than being side by side. That's created some opportunities for us, but, you know, comes that Friday and that Saturday, uh, and we sent out our packet of information to our craft vendors, uh, Friday of last week. So they've, they are receiving their information with some of the changes that we have in place. Uh, one of my concerns, as, um, county manager mentioned, was the quarantine. You know, um, the people who run this festival are just a handful. And some of them have been doing it for twenty years plus. This is my eighteenth year. And I really don't do that much, but sit back beh- behind a table and kind of watch what our staff does from that standpoint and then accept the responsibility of it. But, uh, we, you know, we, we work hard at it, uh, it will be a challenge this year, no doubt about it. Uh, Commissioner Casky, you asked about, uh, you know, the pay with some of the staffing, we've got auxiliaries. Uh, they've only got four. Uh, they're not a Rowan County employee. We do pay them. But they won't benefit from the Rowan County employee pay. What, you know, the, the start, the pay, the pay that we have to them, Rowan Rescue Squad, they will be there. They'll, they'll provide one ambulance. Um, Chief Kress, he was able to take care of making sure that we had that in place. So, uh, other than that, the show will go on. And, uh, we, with y'all's blessings tonight, with what's been presented to you by the commissioners, I mean, by the county manager, uh, we will make it work. And though, as I said, those who do not want to work this, and one of our concerns, a large percentage of our staff are high school and college students that work this. Um, you know, the money's there, they're excited, but the parents may not be as excited and hold them back. And if they hold them back, then we've got less people, but the same amount of work's gotta be done. So in crafting the plan that they have, we should have the resources necessary if that, if those people pull out. Thank you.
Don, uh, define the auxiliaries that you were talking about.
Uh, what, they're not, they at one time were probably Rowan County employees, uh, Hugh Boss. He, he is an auxiliary, he's a police chief, but he's not on Rowan County employ, uh, and they've got four, uh, normally they have eight, but this year we've only got, uh, I was told yesterday by Andy, we've got four or five that are working. And we pay them, don't hold me to this, it's either twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour for them to work. And two deputies work Friday night and Saturday night to police the area because the craft vendors leave their uh, craft in the tents and all just for security purposes. So again, they are not Rowan County employees, but they do work.
Yeah, they've, they've had the same issue that, uh, the fire departments have because to be auxiliary, you still have to keep up all the credentials of a regular police, but they don't get paid really. A lot of it's volunteer, they volunteer at a lot of the events. I guess they get paid for the part, but, um, they'll be at faith and they'll do that for free. So they've kind of dwindled down too because of all the requirements.
So did that issue come up in the discussions? Is, is that, is that a decision that was consciously made to?
No, I don't think it was a decision that was made to exclude and honestly had not give a whole lot of, uh, thought into that. Cause this is a large, you know, undertaking, and when Mike mentioned that, a light bulb went off with me at that time.
But do you pay them?
Yes, we pay them, we pay them, and, you know, the rescue squad, um, we do not pay them, they're, they're a service.
So we could just say we're gonna pay them this rate?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're not taking volunteers from the general public. These are, they're all Rowan County employees is the point, but those folks that you would have as a part of this that is typically part of.
Yeah, or you, or when you say auxiliary, you mean, uh, someone that has BLET certification?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you wanted to extend it to, you know, anybody that, that is not a county employee that in the past or, you know, uh, has BLET, most likely, um, they're gonna be well, unless they work for the towns, um, they're gonna be an auxiliary or reserved with the deputy, so they kind of are a county employee, whether they're not, so, yeah, you could certainly say that in the case of, you know, if there's a couple with BLET and their certification is held somewhere else. Yeah, that's no problem at all. That's just something I didn't think about.
Yeah, I, I think you know what we're trying to do here.
Exactly.
So, you know, if it's, there, there may be some that you have come out, you would know we wouldn't.
Right. Again, between Hugh Boss and Andy Parks, they take care of that. Andy Downs, not Andy Parks. I mentioned the rescue squad.
Kelly. Are we able to extend the same benefit to the rescue squad? We typically don't pay.
Or they just come out and have a try?
Um, quite honestly, they're, they're, on most days and years past with anaphylactic, you know, bee stings, uh, heart attacks, strokes, heat exhaustion.
Well, no, I mean, they just come out for, they're just, they're voluntarily.
They're there nine AM in the morning and they leave at five in the afternoons, Saturday and Sunday. They, they are our service, uh, they are our EMS providers.
We typically don't pay them, right?
Come on, Alan.
Mr. Swell, I understand the way the rescue squad does that. They, they have people that sign up to work those events and everything. They are compensated some, at some point by the rescue squad, most of the time. Um, I do know they have an ambulance for both days that's coming to stand about there. Now, they're, some of them may be county employees at some point and some of them may not be. So I don't know if we could set them up as vendors.
Are they gonna have two, two people out there each day?
Yes, sir.
I think our heart is that, I mean, if, if I'm out there working for twenty-five and I know everyone else is getting sixty, I'm asking questions. So again, understanding what kind of the philosophy of this is. I think we extend that to everybody.
That's, we can, that's fine. It's the, the, and I stand to be corrected by Jay and or Jim or anybody else in the room, but as I understand it, I have the authority to enter into individual agreements with contractors, such as the rescue squad or someone that's not associated with the county. What I don't have authority to do is create pay scales for employees. So, um, if it's the board's wish that those volunteer and receive the same compensation, I don't think that's any problem at all. It's just I can't do it, um, for the employees because it's, because. It's just I can't do it for the employees because it's, because of the way the pay plan and the statutes are with that.
All right, then are we ready to make a motion? All right, so make a motion that we approve the Autumn Jubilee Volunteer Policy for County Employees and have County Manager authority to deal specifically with those discuss tonight that may just fall right outside of that.
And Mr. Chairman, one more addition to that is a budget amendment or authorization to use $120,000 from the AARP money.
Second.
Right. Do we need to vote?
Say aye.
Aye.
Thank all of you very much. Up topic.
I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I do want to thank you folks for approving that money. We did not have the Autumn Jubilee last year and it's a big deal for the park. It's a big deal for citizens of Rowan County and folks outside of Rowan County that comes in and enjoys the most beautiful park in North Carolina. And so I'd like to thank staff for coming up with the ideas of, that we can approve to get folks in here safely and thank you for all your hard work.
All right, thank you Commissioners and Jim. All right, Randy, update on our matrix assessment implementation.
Good evening Commissioners. All right, I'll make sure I can drive here. All right. So last time I was here was in January of this year and you were looking to approve the matrix study and move through some of the processes. So I'll give you an update of where we're at now here in September. So just for your review, the matrix study covered all of the departments that we have listed in front of you, which is building inspections, planning and development, environmental health, and also fire inspections as well. So their study went through and came up with suggestions on current processes, staffing needs and technology needs. I won't show you the list, I'm sorry.
Can I, I, I appreciate that the Boy Scouts have stayed. Usually they do the pledge and then haul out. So I'm shocked that you're still here. So a lot of this, you got to be wondering, what in the world are they doing? So last year, we engaged the help of a consultant to look at our development process. And by that, we mean, we talked about earlier tonight, a company wants to build a 700,000 square foot building here in Rowan County and then attractive jobs and a tenant. Well, when they come to us, there's a lot of bureaucracy and hoops they have to jump through before they can build their building. And so as a community, we want to make sure that one of the things that can be said about Rowan County is that our process is efficient, it makes sense, it's predictable, we, they can follow it. And, and when we have those things in place, then developers like North Point, who is back a second time, recognizes that the process that we had was really, really good. And so we're taking a look at our process more closely to see how can we get even better. That creates a real competitive edge for Rowan County. So Randy has taken, he's our assistant county manager and Randy has taken that under his wing and trying to make our departments even more efficient so that we're even more competitive. So the things he'll talk about here in the next few minutes is what we're doing to try to do that, okay?
Thank you. And to the chairman's point, as I listed the four departments here, the goal of this is while there's a lot of work going on in the back end, the front side of it, you're dealing with citizens or contractors as you're going through and they don't need to know all the inner workings. They just need to know they want to have something done and not know all the different names of all the departments and intricacies. So with that, we'll talk about, and I'm happy to say, everything on these slides that you'll see is new from the January timeframe. So we're not talking about anything that was already in progress. From staffing perspective, with planning and development under Ed Muir, there's been two retirements with a lot of knowledge that was lost through those retirements. There was also a change recommended and that has been implemented with our erosion control specialist, moving from environmental management. That's Mr. Josh Knapp. He's come into the process and been working on both the erosion control and looking at other areas to expand into from the planning department. With that, over this past nine months, we've entered into some contracts with services for knowledge transfer as well for Mr. Knapp. One of those is actually to Mr. Greg Green to, to work with him, set forth that process. So it's done really great and Mr. Knapp's done well as well in that new role. We've also brought on ordinance control officer with another retirement, Mr. Ryan Mickey, that's under Ed as well. And we've had reviews through both building inspections and planning and development to really understand the ordinance enforcement process, how to do this going forward and base it off of complaint driven process instead of going back and forth between multiple departments, understanding what that is when the phone, the, the call comes in, how it's driven, and then where that process is going to be. So for minimum housing requirements, and I think you heard Shane mention earlier about helping to remove some abandoned mobile homes, streamlining that process and understanding who's that person, who's the go-to that you talk with for that. And so internally, there's some work that happens between the scenes, between building inspectors and our code enforcement officer to make sure that process is handled correctly. But from the public facing, we do have that, Mr. Mickey for that process. Also, switching gears into Mr. Thomas O'Kelly's area for building inspections, in the budget, you had approved a new position for building inspector. That's actually been filled as of last week and Mr. Chris Walton has taken that role. So this is his second week in that process. He is a licensed general contractor, so that helps us from the building inspector standpoint and other things. I do list here that he has all trades and permit inspections that he can do. He is working through that. There's one item that Thomas is working with him on, but he'll, he'll be completely up to speed here. So in that particular case, bringing on staff, new hire that's able to jump right in and get going. Also checked with Adrian Pruitt this morning and I know he gives his updates, but I just wanted to have the, everything combined for environmental health, that for their septic and well division, they do have all their positions filled and all are able to perform inspections, so. I'll let Adrian have that thunder. So yeah, so that's what I wanted to provide on staffing updates, what's changed from that process as it relates. Again, we have 27 some tasks. I'm just kind of dealing with it as we go and what the flow is for what, what makes sense. And these are all ticking items off of that. So getting into the technology side, this really is, the majority of this slide is what I had in January for technology task highlights, but here's where we're at now and what we're working through. There's been a lot of staff from both IT, GIS and working with building inspections and planning on a weekly basis for the online portal. So this is the digital side. This is bringing everything for all things development and permitting with this, and I'll mention it at the end, some, for some things to look for, we will be working with Deborah Horn and her group for moving over fire inspections in the beginning of next year. We've got to go through a few software upgrades first. Just doesn't make any sense to do it now. The, the system's going to change dramatically between now and then. We have had a review with both building inspections, Shane Stewart and also Shane in planning and I always forget, but anyway, we've had reviews with both to look at the Blue Beam software, which is what integrates in or allows for digital submissions. So we're going to be moving forward with at least getting electronic submissions in place where applicable. We, we understand and this is what I found working with staff, is not everybody is going to submit electronically. We're just going to start working through and say, if you want to do this, you can start that process. We've been trying to make sure the backend is capable of, of taking those files.
So that ties all of the departments into the same.
Yep, yeah, so that, the whole goal of this is, this is going to bring everybody into the same software. So if you look at silos of everybody, you know, we have two departments using the software now, but workflows is really our big piece. Making sure that if you're coming in, that you have a zoning permit prior to having a building inspection or a fire inspection and bringing everyone into one system is going to allow that workflow process to be created. So with this, just kind of digging in a little bit more, we go through a weekly process with the vendor. I'd say in my assessment, we've maxed our ability to work with a particular project manager that we have. So we've asked to bring on somebody else that's more comfortable with working with our type environment and the way I've described it to, to staff and, and looking at other counties is we're going to be one of the best ones in a state, if not the best. Because we have all the things in place, we've got, we definitely have the right staff for it across the department. So it makes that a pretty easy process, just trying to get the vendor and working with everything to, to get it all lined up.
Randy?
Yes, ma'am.
So when you're talking about this software program, environmental health in the health department is going to be able to be a part of that?
Yes, and actually Adrian's very excited about that process. So I list fire inspections transition, I think I actually listed on the last slide, but we just, they'll actually be going around the same time. So what's happening is, we're scheduled for November for the major software upgrade. We tried to get it earlier and they're backlogged across the board. You know, used holding back payments and things like that. It really didn't matter. They are just completely backlog. So November is our first, our first date and then we can go production in December. So with that, it just makes sense to have them involved with that process and then start going forward in January.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So with that, and this has been a, a great piece of it is, and this has happened prior to this, but is moving from what we had for the prior version, which was citizen access portal to this new citizen self-service or contractor self-service. So we worked with April, we've got GIS involved in everybody. So rowancountync.gov/css. And so that's the citizen self-service page. I'll show that here in a moment. I've got screenshots of some others, but this is what we've been working with, building inspections, they're starting to bring items you can request and check online. Staff are ramping up on how to work with new folks that are coming in and understand. So Shane and Jennifer in building inspections have been amazing on this piece to work out all the details and understand, okay, how do we get newer electrical? How do we make that where it's going to be completely be done online? What happens when you call in? How do you take payments? Sort of phasing out some legacy things with how to take credit card payments. You have contractors in our community that want to pay recurring charges. They're, they're doing permits all the time. So ways to keep credit cards on file and be able to do that charge automatically and be compliant through that process. So we've got these out there and Shane and Jennifer are continuing to work. And the next phase is they're starting to work with Shane on the planning side at this point.
Instructions or?
Nope. These are actually, we start off, this is when you go to that CSS page, you can actually go through and request inspection times. You can request these particular inspections as well. So you're actually requesting conditional power for electric and providing information.
So would they be systems generated permits or, I guess that's what I was getting at?
Okay. It, it kicks off the process. Yeah, it, it's, it's, it's the same process. Ultimately, an inspector goes out, performs the inspections. You work with the scheduling time that you want to have that done. So this is more of the citizen self-service kiosk. Think of it like Amazon, but very customer service. You're still working with somebody and nothing automatic from that, but you can still schedule. I know we've talked through how to do multiple permits. Doing this online is much easier than doing a paper-based form and filling out one for every single structure. And this is also where if you have site plans, you can attach your site plans as well. So you reduce your trips into the office if need be, or something can be added to it. And this also allows you to check your status online of both what you have. And this is completely open, so you can go check permits if you know of somewhere else or you're, you're watching something from a contractor perspective as well.
Randy, for years, we have issued bonds for small contractors and it's a small amount of money, but was a pain for most all of them. If now you're going to be able to have a credit card that you charge them with, if you have the credit card online and then they're going to be able to automatically take the, the cost of the permit, charge it to the credit line, I mean, charge it to the credit card, shouldn't we be able to do away with the bonds?
That is a great question. That's the feedback I wanted. I'll have to look and see what we can do, but I will definitely talk with Thomas and we'll see what, what our options are. If you have a credit card on file, is there some way to have a form that? We'll just have to see what general statute allows and what we can do, but I'll definitely take that as an item to look at. Yeah. Yeah. But no, thank you. That's exactly the feedback I was looking for, if you think of something. So during this process, we have the production live site and what's nice about going through this, this method is we also have a testing site. So everything goes through test unless folks get antsy and want to start putting permits out, because I know Shane likes to do that. He'll get some things done and he'll just want to get it, get it out there. But we do have a testing site for, for play and being able to go through. So as you can see, we've already started working with and have plans for zoning permits and items there. So we can do all of this and test. The, the goal in matrix had mentioned this as well, and I'll be talking with staff about this process, but we just need to understand what the capabilities of our systems are. I, I can tell you, I spoke with Ed and Thomas and that's what we're learning through this is what all can we do? So before we look at, hey, let's have contractors and citizens be a part of a feedback loop on this, let's know what we can do before we start asking and soliciting input or else we're going to be trying to build something that we can't do. So as we go through this process, then we can use testing sites to engage others to see if it works for them, if we've got some interested parties. So this is, you know, this is what April has set up. This is the test site. So again, it's going to be a portal for that. We'll have everything. This is not live, this is a screenshot, but we've moved fee estimator. This is the goal of saying, if you're trying to do something with Rowan County that relates to development and inspecting, you're going to one place. Don't worry about if you know what department name is, where to go on the website and hopping around. You're applying here, you're paying here. There's, the, the actual live site now has how-to guides as well. So we're following basically practices that we see across the state, just kind of culminating all of those into what seems to be the best to, to work with. And the how-to guides are really nice. That way, if somebody does want to take it, they're in the middle of the night, they just want to click through and see, well, what am I supposed to do if I'm, you know, putting in a well? Where do I go? Can I search for that as opposed to trying to just figure it out by hitting the website and trying to figure out by departments? So with that, we've also added, and I'll say that the intergov site, we've been using that since 2007, I can't, or maybe, maybe a little bit later in 2007. We've got a lot of data in the intergov system. And so I've worked with Columbus and Adrian and GIS to really start digging into what we can do geospatially. So this is just residential. This is starting to take a look at the data we actually have in the system and this is, will be public as well. This can be for contractors, this could be for real estate. And this is showing in this particular current active residential, and this is all starting in January 1 through current date. Things you completed permits down here, these are by trade types. So you can tell, you know, what's being generated. You have, you know, different items. Columbus is really good about showing lots of data. So as we work through, we can kind of figure out what is the right data set that really matters. But I thought what was interesting, you just, just when you start seeing and visualizing what you see every day from a data set, and I'll switch over to the next, is this is just the residential development, currently issued permits by date. So over here, we had 2020 is when the pandemic started. So just to give you a graph, you know, we were down below 100 in this March, April, May timeframe. And you can see routinely, we're sitting, you know, 110 or so per month. That's, that's current and then we were back up. So, you know, if you look at it, we had a little bit of a dip in the number of permits, but these are all items that, this is data that's being collected every day by staff. They're going through the process. It's just starting to extract that and take a look at it a different way. And especially doing it with GIS, we can see heat maps of where there's a lot of development moving, what does it look like over years, things like that. So. So what to expect next? I kind of covered some of it is we do, we are scheduled on the books for the test site to be upgraded in November and immediately one month after, as long as nothing goes crazy, the production site. That'll move us into a mode where I'll feel comfortable with bringing on fire and environmental health. Again, they're excited, we're already starting to talk about what the permits would be that they would bring in for that December 2021 and then starting in January timeframe. So I think that is it. Thank you, Commissioner Green for the feedback on the credit cards and whether that could be a retainer, but I'll entertain any other feedback.
This. Let's help gauge, I guess, I think after some. Let's help gauge, I guess, uh, I think after some, um, I guess, recent, uh, issues we found on the board, it shows importance of our planning permitting departments inspections. Um, let's be able to help us better gauge where we may need additional resources once this is in place. Or it's sort of like a clearinghouse where we can look and see where our deficiencies are or?
I think there's ways definitely to look at that data set. Um, you know, if you're looking at an increased number of permits, you can look back on time, see what you had staffing wise. So, uh, especially seeing it from a different perspective, not just, not having just a report, but being able to put different timeframes. Um, that's the reason I'm showing screenshots of this, because it's being worked on. There's been a lot of work between Columbus, uh, and, uh, and in G I S and building inspections to make sure the data we're showing on the screen. Are we representing the data that you see, um, on a weekly basis? That way you know everything's right, because first thing you want to do is start thinking you're making decisions and you realize the data is off by magnitudes. So, so yeah, that, um, as far as being able to predict there, um, yeah, yes, sir.
So, uh, one question, current, in a current system or the past system? You know, there's a lot of departments that have their hands involved. Some of those are spread around in different areas. If, if I walked in and, and, uh, would, and I gave my name and I said, I kind of don't know where I am in the process, what do I need to do this? Was that department able to pull up?
No. No, that, that's one of the thing, and that's where I thought you were going with that is, um, especially as of late, looking through some of the processes to understand, you know, where is, uh, a, a building or electrical permit related to a zoning? And that's, that's been really good to go through that process and work with everybody to understand why does this matter? What is the importance of this workflow to know that, no, really, you know, zoning permits should come first, you have to check this first. So if you go somewhere else, how do I retrieve that information? There's also information, uh, that we're having turned on now from a tax perspective. So one of the items that matrix had is, you know, not going over to tax to do parcel IDs. Um, we, we've worked through that, that's been eliminated as well. I didn't put that in there, but, uh, that was a minor item, but really G I S kind of took the lead on that one. Sat down with tax, sat down on building inspections and said, look, we're able to look up this data correct. That's true. Um, so that's, that's part of the process and that's what's going to happen here as well. I know both, uh, Adrian and, uh, Deborah are excited about that piece to be able to say, what can we see? You know, if I go out for a fire inspection, I'm able to see that it's already, does it already have a building permit? Am I able to view the site plan? Uh, and these are items that, you know, I'm just kind of learning as I work with the departments that we're doing two separate copies of site plans. They're going to two separate departments in an office mail. Uh, now you can, you, you, after this process, that's where we're moving toward. So really helps to understand what the pain points are, not so much from what matrix says, but actually living through them and working with the departments, then you really know what you're trying to solve, so. Thank you.
Randy, as you're working through these, um, have you had any customer folks, um, participating at all, just to test out what you're doing?
No, and that's what I'm saying. Right now, I, I'm using the feedback from the departments, just to understand from the department's perspective, what can we do? Uh, now I'm sure from their perspective, they, yes, I know, you know, uh, both building, building inspections has felt some of the pain points of trying to push some of these changes and understand, okay, here's what we have and here's where we're going to go. We actually had changed some of the scheduling of inspections and tried to remove some of the forms there and realized, no, there's still some pieces that need to be worked on there. It doesn't handle all use cases. Um, so that, that's, that's where we're at with it. Once we can kind of really understand what the bounds are and everybody's gotten in and trying to do all of this. Uh, like I said, workflows is going to be our next big piece so that you can stop processes from going from one place to another. And you don't have four different departments utilizing the same system four different ways. But it's all part of the development review process.
Yeah, do you have, uh, environmental health GPS?
Last I talked with Adrian, he did say that they were using it, um, and they're very happy with it. And I think, I know he uses it and he has two, at least two other staff, um, that are all excited to use it. And I will say they're producing really good data. So there's this whole other side of everybody else now wants environmental health's data, so.
One more piece of really good information, Randy.
Yes, yes, sir.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Now Jim's going to sing for you.
I'm good, it was yesterday, it was yesterday, you don't have to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That shouldn't be recorded. I, thank you, Randy, for, uh, for your work on this. There is no, well, I, I'm sorry, I don't think there's anyone else in this, in this room certainly could do what he's doing. But, um, this is very technical and we appreciate your good work. Jim?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. Pulling up the graphs, can you hear, is this working?
Yes.
I gotta talk closer. Uh, let's start out with, uh, sales tax graph. This is for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. We did get our final numbers in for sales tax and we're at thirty-one point eight million, which is pretty good for a pandemic, uh, three point three million higher than last year.
Seven million higher than three, that's unbelievable.
April, next graph. Uh, this is the expenditure graph for the start of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two through August. We're at twenty-three point three million dollars, uh, one point six million higher than last year. April, next graph. Uh, revenue through August, it, it's a little bit deceiving because the tax bills went out a little bit earlier this year. And as you can see, we, we brought in forty-seven point two million already. Where last year we were only at six point seven million. April, the next graph. And this graph, uh, shows you can see what the dot is for the, uh, sales or the property tax where it was, uh, forty-one point six million dollars already. Where last year we were only at three point seven. So that is the report, if anybody's got any questions?
Is there a benefit, what's the benefit? That fact? Are we at three point seven million and now forty-one? Is, is there specifically a benefit?
There is a benefit to the county because that money now we have available to invest and do other things with it.
We're earning.
Yes, sir, we're earning, well, interest rates aren't great, but we're still earning something, otherwise we would not be.
If you keep the forty-seven million dollars a month up, I will give you a bonus.
All right, uh, motion to approve budget amendments?
Aye.
Say aye?
Aye.
Motion adjourned.
So move.